To the Pike, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, what nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody seen today's agenda? Any comments, questions, or corrections? Scaring none of you know be approved as written, reading a minute.
August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, Board of Supervisors met at nine AM with Dave Mulbauer, Chair presiding. Members present were Schultz, Dozart, Mulbauer, Hyden, and Rossberg. Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. The Board approved clerk record fees for July twenty twenty-five. The Board approved hiring of Kathy Singh-Sing.
Singh-Sing.
It's cool. Part-time RN, public health. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Dozart, to approve the notice, public hearing, and publication thereof related to the reclassification of a segment of N Avenue between one hundred and twentieth and one hundred and thirtieth street from service area B to service area A road for September ninth, twenty twenty-five at ten AM, and the Board of Supervisors heard a motion passed unanimously. Dan Ma, CDC Tourism Director, introduced himself to the Board and discussed some new ideas and updates on tourism in Crawford County. The Board had a discussion about mileage rules. When a county vehicle is taken home, county will continue with handbook policy. No action was taken at this time. A motion was made by Hyden, seconded by Dozart, to approve the appointment of Sherri Vaughn to the Region Twelve Housing Authority Board of Directors for the term of October one, twenty-five to September thirtieth, twenty-sixth. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Rossberg, seconded by Schultz, to approve the final passage Crawford County Animal Control Ordinance after waiver of requirements under Iowa Code three-three-one, point three-oh-two subsection six, subsections A and B. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Rossberg, seconded by Hyden, to authorize the auditor to publish the Animal Control Ordinance. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Dozart, to approve the DHS tax suspensions. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Hyden, seconded by Schultz, to approve the amended estimate for flooring for the Sheriff's Office. Motion passed unanimously. The Board had a discussion with the proposal for courthouse parking lot, fifteen South Twelve Street repairs. No action was taken at this time. A motion was made by Dozart, seconded by Rossberg, to approve the tax abatement for nineteen nineteen Highway thirty-nine, Deloitte, James, and Lynn Brown for a steel, a new steel building slash utility machine shed. Motion passed unanimously. At ten thirty-seven AM, a motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Hyden, to open the closed session pursuant to Iowa Code twenty-one point five, subsection one, subsection C, which allows for a closed session. Motion passed unanimously at eleven-ten AM. Motion was made by Hyden, seconded by Rossberg, to close the closed session. Motion passed unanimously. On motion due we second the Board adjourned at eleven-ten AM. Addendees for the next meeting are posted available with the courthouse on Friday four-thirty PM. Nice meeting.
And corrections, comments? Hearing a minute's will be approved. Supervisor reports Kyle.
Well, we didn't have views yesterday. They weren't well. And we reached out to everybody here. Know what our thoughts were. Need to make a decision on that, yep. It's all five of ours to do it, but.
Want that on next week's agenda?
I think so. Yeah. Last question Dave and I have, I mean, do we really? Do we have to have it on the agenda as official action, or we can just?
Oh.
And then just have it on the personal change.
That's up. Now, I'm cooking at the egg. You discuss who you want to hire. And then you go ask them.
How did you do the IT Director? How did we end up doing that?
You interviewed and you came with your recognition and then when you offered it to him, came back to the Board.
I mean, right, it was a discussion between myself and Ryan, as to what he would accept. Then I presented to the Board, I guess, to provide a offer him job. That's just salary. God, I think that's the kind of really need to do there, that he would accept if we made it that offer. Because if we did make it that offer, I called him then after the meeting, said we made the offer, because I know like, he got right back and sent it back to me. Well. Oh, my meeting right now, I don't know if we want to. Do much, do it that's, but the in regards to all that. Then try to reach, put the play first. Yeah, just hold off on making sure it's on the agenda.
Okay, let me know. Something needs to go on there.
We call each Friday or whatever, just to make sure. But we do also need to keep moving on it, because man, his last day is.
Right, right.
She has to get it to him. She's here.
She's here this week.
We do have another way or take.
One say we are.
Well, I'm sure, I know I've forgotten something, but can't figure what it is right now. So, obviously, you're going to pop some ahead of. Pass first, see time, but that. I don't think we'll allow that.
Oh.
Well, I don't know.
Linger just later.
This ain't helping you get fixed.
Well, I guess we did have some, we're still having some sewer problems with our new building that would. Toilet back of.
There was a bummer over there. I don't know what happened with that.
I don't know if something happened yesterday or not. I don't know.
No idea.
But we wondered if the pipe from the street to the building might be restricted or something, or what's going on, but.
What I worry about is that they didn't get all the, you know, when they realized that it was the brown paper towel last month, that maybe that is continuing on down, that they maybe didn't get it all, I don't know.
Yeah.
Tree roots could be, could be tree roots.
Kind of gave them the green light to get a hold of whoever had scoped the pipe or something, because we can't, can't have this continue to happen.
Can you climb?
Right, very easily.
Could be tree root.
I mean, that building was empty for a while, so.
Building said, you have thirty years and then.
Full force. Makes sense.
We need to keep up on that and try to get that stopped before we have. Tell me about it.
So this bummer was there yesterday?
I don't know. I know. I'm just kind of, you have some parts and pieces of all this as of yesterday. I did talk to Dave and I thought he was going to get a hold of top and plumbing, and I don't know if he did. So, but.
Like I said, I think Verlens ended up coming.
All right.
So, and I don't know when. I don't know. I was at ISAC last week, so. I just know I got a text saying she needs a portage. And the air fridge, Mary.
Yeah, I guess. So was he there just to get that unclogged and then, I, I, that, see, I, this is the question, I don't know, but there is an issue still happening over there.
Verlens had the camera that you put down there. I know.
Yeah, I don't know who has, it's the only one that I know.
I bet they most.
Yeah, I think Tom has some. We'll try, I'll try to get to the bottom of it today, if I can.
That's really something I want to look into, but.
Not much for information yesterday, so I didn't know.
You guys, everybody in ISAC and everything, it's kind of a wild.
I'll try to find out.
All right, okay. Thanks, Scott.
Had a Wesco meeting yesterday. And I mean, other than stating the obvious, that technology is changing this world quickly. One thing that we did yesterday as a board is we approved a one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar contract, contract with a company called One Vision. And what they do is they design what's called a smart home. And what this will allow is that you can have clients in a home that can be up to a five-person home, but it could be maybe a one or two-person home that people that want more privacy. But they are lined up with, you know, like, uh, medication containers that are automatic, so they never miss their medications. It comes with sensors in the toilet that track for or can find urinary tract infections.
Oh, wow.
And so notify the doctor, nurse immediately. They can allow the person to have more freedom and thus it can reduce the amount of people that Wesco would be required to hire currently to to constantly see these people. And actually, what the company, One Vision, is also a provider like Wesco is. They do what Wesco does with clients in Iowa and Minnesota. And then they designed this safe home concept. And so that's another part of their entity is they sell this or contract it out. And what they saw happen was before in an average home, they had one-point-four full-time equivalency employees per person. And if you are in one of these new homes, that drops to point-six-five full-time equivalency on persons. So Wesco, if they thought that they could get thirty people maybe in, in what's called a safe house, that it would probably reduce their expenditures on employees of upwards of five-hundred-thousand dollars. And, and in my mind, when you sit there and you, and you hear this, is that to take it another step further with the business that I'm in, as far as we sell long-term care insurance, and so a lot of times that goes towards assisted living, or home care, is that this concept, how many people may be from a private pay standpoint, this is Wesco might actually, and that's something that Clay brought up, we might actually get private paid people to pay to have this service at their home, where you've got, you know, I'm sure it'll be harder for people that are eighty-five years old currently that want to stay at home that are not computer literate, because you need to be computer literate, because you can actually have a iPad type of thing where you can hit a button. And there's two people that will automatically come on and say, what do you need? You know, what can I do for you? Or there's reminders on there that, hey, today, you know, you have to take this pill. Today you have a doctor's appointment at ten o'clock. Today you have this. Today you have that. And
Sometimes I can forget before that conversation goes.
You can. You can, but I mean, it, it goes to the fact that, given an example that this One Vision had, was that you could have someone currently that lives in Erling, Iowa, that is being transported up here to go to Wesco or work up here, that they could stay at their apartment or their home in Erling, not have to travel up here. Maybe they have a part-time job. They work with an employer down in the Erling area, and it would not affect the reimbursement that Wesco gets from Medicaid, because these people are leveled, or are either a tier-one, two-two, whatever the classification is that Medicaid gives them base, and then that basis is the rate that Medicaid pays. And so that's a lot of the younger people. I guess Wesco sees more younger people that have some mental issues or some behavioral issues that still want to have maybe the freedom to live at home, but they don't want to live with four other people. Maybe they just have one other roommate, that I think this will allow them to really reach out and do things for some clients that they're not reaching now. And it will allow them to, I think, reduce the amount of it's always Wesco has about a thirty-five percent turnover rate on their employees. So when you have that, and that's industry, that's not Wesco rare. That's pretty industry standard for, for that industry. And so it would certainly allow them maybe to have a higher retention level with employees than they have. And I mean, it's a big thing. And, and I mean, I think from the board standpoint, we thought that we wanted to be first in the area to have this, that I think New Hope Village in Carroll is also talking to this company about doing it also. And we just felt like if we could be first, that's important. And to get the advertising, I mean, nobody, to me, markets and even Clay said, and you know, nobody, if we're marketing us versus New Hope Village, Wesco's going to win all the time. So we want to be first and get out there and start marketing it.
Right.
So, I mean, it's a.
It's a pretty good return on investment, though.
A great return on investment, great return on investment. And Medicaid likes it because the, for instance, the, the medication errors drop eighty-nine percent in these small courts. And.
That never sticks out.
Yeah, and so that's was Medicaid sees it as these are safer. And even though it's more high-tech, you can just see that we're this, where our country's going, and what's happening with technology and AI. Some of it's going to be used for some really good stuff. And some of it's, you know, unfortunately, not going to be used for some good stuff. But it's, it was, it was, it was interest. I mean, they had, they had net, the company One Vision, they had net payroll de-debt reduction of twenty-five percent. They reduced their payroll by twenty-five percent.
Oh, and you're having that kind of turnover, they're just kind of meeting your mark.
Right, exactly, exactly.
But that helps. It's on your people's.
Yeah, cared for, right.
So they're able to retrofit existing.
Right, retrofit.
Plus new.
Plus new, right.
Wow. How's that work with like some of your federal compliance things? Like, you know, you talk important bit must be, they accept that?
They do, they do. And that, that's one of the reasons that they went with One Vision, because One Vision has already went through this whole process with Medicaid and Medicare. And so they can help Wesco get through this, because I brought up the question to Clay is, hey, if somebody else can do it without hiring somebody, which One Vision did, can we do that? You know, can Wesco do that? And he's like, yeah, I think we could. But they've already went through this whole process with Medicare, with Medicaid. And he said, without hiring someone extra as a leadership team that they have, that they thought they could, you know, work this in with their current management team along with the One Vision. So it's a, like I said, I, I I didn't envision something like that down, you know, happening, but it is going to happen. And it's happening fast. Happens fast.
Yes.
We're still looking for people on the Wesco Board. They've reached out, and I think they did have the retiring Director of VMU has accepted that he will serve on Wesco Department. So that's nice. We're still looking for other, but that's just a process. That's not a.
Forget, forget it this fast, or this One Vision.
We, we, we approved it. We, we approved it. We had a motion and accepted the contract for a hundred and fifty grand for payable over twelve months, twenty percent upfront. And then a monthly fee for the next twelve months.
A monthly fee on top of the one fifty?
The monthly, the one fifty divided up by.
Do they start right away then, putting in?
Well, we're going to, we want to start no later than October fifteenth. We're starting.
Might as well.
That's exciting.
It is, it is.
True, even as our.
Things always up to something.
People get older. They're more IT savvy than, you know.
Well, even you know, we look at people, Gene, like you mean a tie.
You're including us all.
But, I mean, although technology still kind of amazes us, we have had phones and computers and iPads for twenty years.
Twenty years.
That's been part of, you know, our life for twenty years, even though it's been part of my kids', you know, my kids' since their birth. You know, they had it in their life, and you look at your grandkids, they just are, it's shocking what they do. I mean, you get, you're, I'm constantly telling my seven-year-old grandson, slow down. I wanted, what are you doing?
Yeah, yeah.
I was going to say, it's kind of embarrassing.
For me, to watch it go out and, well, why couldn't you do that?
I mean, we were, right.
Knowing how to, you know.
Right.
So it's not as born as it would have been twenty years ago to have somebody have to push a button.
Technology's actually born into the way it works, though.
It is, it seems like it, right.
Hardwired.
Hardwired.
Do they ever talk at Wesco about Medicaid, any changes with the funding for that?
I mean, they were told there's going to be absolutely no changes in funding through December thirty-one of this year. Everything that's been funded before is going to be funded the same way.
All right.
After that.
Okay.
They haven't been told one-hundred percent what it's going to be, but they're as things are progressing, they, they are I guess, less afraid that the funding's not going to be there.
Well, I think they have a plan if it's not, I think that they're solid enough to.
So I, I guess as the state has made their changes, that they feel more comfortable with the changes as time goes on. Now, could that change? Certainly. But they feel more comfortable than they did, than they did with the changes in person. So it's, it's, it's a fun time to be, to be on that, that board. It's, it's they're a really good-run business, very, the management team is excellent. And so it's, it's privileged to serve.
Well, you can tell you never come bad news. You always have good news, Wesco.
And Earl Shalit today.
You know, you're still looking for Board Director people. Maybe you should, you know, morning scoop, with Clay and that.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
They love.
And have a little rage, like Louise did yesterday. Louise and I were up there trying to find commissioners for VA, like, just get up there and get on.
That's a great idea.
I mean, that's something that struggled, I went there for several months.
Right.
Give you a chance to talk.
Try to get the word out in another way, but.
Right, right, good idea. I will bring it up. That's all I got.
I'll make it quick. We were, last year we were at ISAC all last week. Ty and I had a couple of meetings on Tuesday afternoon. I do need to give a recognition to Ty. You're looking at our new Secretary of Treasure of the ISAC Board. I just.
For the supervisor.
Maybe supervisors.
Sound of applause.
Yep, so that's it. That's exciting.
Anybody running yesterday?
Yeah, actually, okay. Well, not really. I mean, there was two of us who were interested. They said we'd do it. Latifah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So you're what, Secretary slash Treasure?
Yeah.
Which will put him in the rotation of, that'll be Secretary, you'll be Secretary for next year, and then move into second vice, and then first vice, and then president.
Got something to look forward to.
Still here.
Yeah. But kudos to Ty for stepping up and showing us and gave them the part. Like we always say, you're either at the table or you're on it.
On the menu, that's right.
But I had a lot of good, good discussion. There's some things that came out of a joint session with assessors and supervisors and far as GGS can talk about too. It's memorandum of understanding and making things more black and white, like Franklin County, they actually bill, pay back the county for any HR consulting, like, so like, they use Chad Reed or Chelsea. They would pay us back for their time, because they're a separate entity. Same with the county attorney. They would pay back county attorney's hours for any legal advice, to just kind of keep saying it's black and white, that's.
Do they IT also or not?
Yes, yes, I think that would be, because they are.
Because it shouldn't all come out of the general fund.
No, no. IT would be another one.
So six, say, say that again, you mean Franklin County?
Yep, and a number of counties do it.
I think they all.
But they basically pay back the county for any county services they use, because they're their own entity.
And levy their own tax.
Theirs are all taxed.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess that makes sense. It's no different than the Secretary of Roads.
I kind of wonder.
Exactly.
I wondered if they have that twenty-eighteen.
No, they didn't mention that.
Have a memorandum of.
No memorandum of understanding.
Memorandum of understanding.
And that goes for your office, too.
Yes.
Oh, for paying claims and doing payroll and stuff?
Right.
So that there's, they're clear under, remember the confusion we had.
Oh, yeah.
It's designed to. But, but it eliminates that confusion. And, and it's actually them, them don't come across to our board, because we aren't charged with that. We're only part of the conference. You see what I'm saying?
This kind of makes it.
Like when we do, like where we were signing stuff today, or we sign stuff for claim. We don't do that for us. We don't. It still goes through her office, because she's like, writes the checks for Crawford County.
They also even talked a little bit about health insurance. Some counties, the assessor's department has tweaks to their health insurance that aren't quite in line with what we have. And they said, that's fine, but they, if it costs more, they cover that cost. I mean, here, they can piggyback off us, that's no problem, but if they want something a little bit different, you know, it's not at our cost.
The example was, you know, for a while, the county had a certain benefit, and the county did away with that benefit, but they wanted to keep it.
The county voted to.
And the reason that you guys don't see their claims and all of that is because she, it's per code, she keeps all those, she has her own auditor that comes in and audits her and has, and she has to have those originals, and that's why she doesn't send those forward to, just like the, you know, everybody else, like us, we just had to give her all our receipts. She, you're not going to see theirs probably, because they had.
Maybe a better way of doing business, that you don't run it.
No. Sorry, and I do currently see them.
Well.
To you, so, so you know you're not writing a bad.
Because we, we also, we scan them in, so they're still available to their auditor.
Yeah.
And that the assessor has access to run those reports, access those claims, even though they're in the finance, you know what I mean, in our software. So it's not like they become private to us either. They're not just ours. It's it's in the county software, so that the public information.
So I think you can get that all into the memorandum of understanding. You don't have any issues to worry about, they don't eat.
But what I like about it.
That's awesome. I like that idea.
She has her own attorney.
They should have had you guys in.
I wondered if you were actually in the back. They, she has her own attorney, her own line item for her phone attorney, which looks over her stuff.
Whether they use a county attorney of their own.
Yeah. I, I think she just likes to have that second opinion kind of, and our, our, the conference board would have their attorney look over her memorandum of.
Well, I'm sure negotiating some of those commercial property assessments.
He was.
You know, when they.
Oh, yeah, he was, well.
Okay, he is Ray. He's the current President, Chris, yes, after this year. Crystal was going to email you the, her MOU.
Yep.
Yeah.
I think, I think I have it from back.
Just have template of what they're doing.
Yeah.
That'd be interesting. That's cool.
Obviously, we were thinking about you as a little second.
But I mean, good timing as, as we go forward with.
I wondered those things, why were they never paying?
I wondered this same thing.
You know, I guess I didn't realize it was going on in other counties.
Yes.
Should have asked. We get a new hire, bring that up, and hey, this is what we want to do.
Yeah, yep.
Good timing to do it.
And that's, I think, the key, once again, is just that communication and just understanding what Iowa Code lays out, and whether we agree with it or not necessarily, this is what Iowa Code, until we change Iowa Code.
Right.
They.
But the taxpayers deserve a level of transparency, whether it's in Iowa Code or not. It's, I think it's just.
Absolutely, that's where the, so when they start.
And that's where I come from, is.
When they started their, you know, they were very pleasant. It was, you know, you, my first thought is, well, if you are not of the county, then frankly, then why don't you just get paid by the state? They make all the rules, and you don't even have, have your office in the courthouse, you know. I don't know. But it is required that we provide them a space, you know, so it's not that we can charge them rent.
Right.
Or maybe we could.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know. They, they said.
We had to provide it, or we have to provide DHA. We had to provide it, oh, we have to provide uh, DHA's S's basement. They still pay rent, so maybe that's a part of that.
Are we still working on that, by the way?
It's gonna be no different than you having to do all the claims for a city, and maybe you're building something all night.
Yeah, especially when they're their. Interesting. It had a lot of.
Never thought about it, never realized, just always thought they were like any other departments.
And I wonder when the last time that Iowa code was ever changed, you know, the way that it's written, it just. I, I understand why they need to be autonomous, and that you can't have a bunch of, you know, people telling them how to do stuff, but. The problem, and I told Chris this, you know, the problem is, is if you write a policy manual that isn't backed up by law. And as an example, that you're in your policy, you say that if, if you have people working from home, they would be covered by work must come. And that's, that really just should not be in there, so who gets to, to keep something in there that, if you're working from home and you fall over your cat. How, how does the county end up having to pay for that?
I still think, like with a, I mean, who sits on any commissioner board that has to have, you know, its own. Anything, whether it's a handbook or whatever. The count, the, that board always has to sign off on that, they might not do all the writing, or they may actually do the writing. I mean, like on CDC, I remember when I first got on that, they were redoing the handbook and going over things, you know, and the board did. However, I mean, if, if the assessor wants to be actively in play, in in play at that, that's fine. With a couple of, like a many on the, from the boards, or not even, they still present it and we would have to approve it. I mean, you approve everything else in there, the budget is our main thing, and there would be budget items in that handbook. Things that would affect the budget, so I think that we should, you know, actually. We, not this board, but as the conference board, you know, would have to have some oversight on that, because it runs the department. The assessor runs the department, we have the, we have the governance over the assessor, not her department, or his department, or whoever it may be. You see what I'm getting at?
I think communication is key, and then like even Chris alluded to, she said when she wrote her handbook. And she brought in the auditor, supervisors. You know, they, they discussed it all together and explained why they're doing what.
And if they use the counties, there can be an addendum that is very specific to the assessor's office. We have it for other departments, we have landfill things that are specific, we have secondary road things. Little uniquenesses in there, so it's not hard to do that and still have. You know, a county handbook, so.
Has to be a rule.
I don't think that she would disagree with that, I, I mean, just as long as the things that are unique to them are covered in the handbook. That's kinda how I took it.
Well, then it takes it back to the budget, you know, of the conference board, if you have fifty thousand dollars in a line item for an attorney. The conference board feels that's too high, you know, uh, because that's, that's an open checkbook then a little bit, they have all these line items with things. Cause it's very specific that they can move that around however they need to.
It's just like our budgets.
All in all, I think good sessions.
They were very. In the beginning, that first session we had, I kinda wondered what that was gonna all be about, that everybody needed to laugh and have a good time, but uh.
We had a keynote speaker that.
Oh, was it Wednesday? Oh, yeah, he was really good.
Jeans harassing me.
I was, cause what he was saying. And he was giving the answers to the people that needed to name the, he was saying it out loud, he needed to be up there, it's like that.
I get it, you know, but I said kinda wanted to, after last spring conference, when John Worden passed away. Kinda put a somber tone on everything and they wanna do, I mean. Lighten the mood, get people in a good mood.
You, you have somebody that's in a suit and tie, rapping with his hands in his pocket, and you can't help but laugh. Anyway, I, I digressed a little bit into uh, uh, it, it was not boring, it was actually pretty in. It was a good conference.
They actually said that.
Yeah, a lot of good uh, uh, yeah, I, I thought it was good, uh, well worth the time to go.
In our joint sessions with the supervisors.
I will say, I'm gonna bring this up, I thought Joel and Andrew got. Chastised a little bit when they were talking about our RFPs for the new IT software that we're working on. There, there's a few people that were a little hostile about the timing, why isn't it done now?
Stuff takes a long time.
It's a volunteer task force, they can only meet so much, they're taking time out of their own personal time to do it. You know, it's, it's not like we, we look and said, oh, we're gonna hold, drag our feet. It's, we're trying to come up with better software that fits, and then we gotta talk to the two vendors about even them implementing it.
Right, and they're not forcing anybody to do it.
Not forcing anybody to do it, but we're, the hope is at the end of the day that we still come out with maybe two companies that. Offer better software with more service, and that it'll be a good thing, but some counties are a little upset, well, we have to switch and we want that product now. Sorry, but we have to start somewhere.
Right, exactly, it was never gonna line up with everybody.
If you could cut the number of counties in half, we'd have a better shot of line.
Andrew kinda, he teased me, gave me a hard time, he said, you sat back there quiet and didn't speak up for us, I said, no, I sit back laughing, watching you two get grilled.
I thought they did a great job.
They had knowledgeable people, you know, they could ask questions too, that were just, you know, it's all.
And the task force really is, right, and I mean, they have auditors, engineers, everybody, they mix of everybody that's using it.
And whoever ends up being, it's just a matter of them being able to support. All the counties that get involved in it, that's probably the biggest deal, I know that's probably our biggest complaint in some of the. Software we use now is just that support, being able, but they're going through the same thing, all employers are going through transition. You know, you talked about thirty five percent turnover, they're doing the same thing, so it's hard for them to, to keep people on board.
But all in all, I feel like we're on the right track, coming up with something that's workable.
Absolutely, that'll be good.
And we're actually seeing some of the. Some of the software companies preemptively, like Joel will laugh, tuck a cheek and say. They, some of them, so we're starting to work on some of that stuff now.
Really, maybe.
Maybe by us just bringing it up.
Maybe they'll step up their game.
Big job.
Yeah, for sure.
I will probably, I'll leave Ty sometime, but I did have West Central Committee action. Uh, what always amazes me about that and one of those boards that you have to listen for a while, where you really pick up what they all. Do, how many different agencies, they, they do a lot, they do a lot, we're in the, the mode of signing all the contracts. And development and budget, or, you know, working on the budget USDA rule development, uh, but everything's going pretty good. They do uh fear some changes in Medicaid, you know, the way that they're figuring income for families, I think that's. A little bit different for your organization, because your, your, your clients all kind of are the same, where. There's different guidelines for different programs with different families and how they figure that income, and I think that's where we're gonna see some changes. That maybe were, that we didn't think about, but.
People that used to qualify.
Right, right, might not, because if they have, let's just say grandma living with them, and she's getting uh, social security that used to not. Count, but now it does, and so they have to re-qualify people, so uh, it's really an interesting board to be on. Because of the fact that they do so many good things for people, uh, but.
And Head Start and Dennison, did they find a vocation or they sell home bills or?
We did not get into the weeds on that, I do have, uh, as you can see, it's a big. It's a lot of paperwork, I took it with me to Des Moines, and I, I did it in my hotel room, and so I was not in my normal space, but uh. Was all good, so I'll just leave it at that, we have some great people that are working there with some passion for the job. So I uh, just like the updates, self-assessment.
Oh, they have great people too.
They do.
Wendy that runs it does a.
Absolutely.
Danny who runs the Head Start.
They all give their reports, and I take notes and uh, yeah, no concerns, let's just put it that way, so, believe me sometime.
Well, you guys, we kinda already covered a lot of the ISAC stuff, so that was the main thing we did last week. I, I actually thought it was a really good conference. I mean, I got a lot, a lot, a lot, a lot of good networking too. I will say that uh, the one thing that, that I went to of, on. The uh, carbon pipeline, and it's a little, little bit less to do with the carbon pipeline that, that we're being asked to be involved in. And I think it's something that we'd wanna be part of, and it's, it's enough. Gonna get this right or wrong, cause I've heard it three or four different ways pronounced, Amicus or Amicus brief? Alright, this brief is about.
Amicus.
Amicus, so you've got lawyers in your family, you're probably better closer to it than I am. Uh, the Amicus brief, and well, see, that's what I heard, that was the other way, but it's, but the, the, some of the professional professionals said it. Yeah, cause if you use European pronunciations of the alphabet, E is I, I is E, so Amicus, and then actually it can be Cus.
Give us the definition of what it is.
Yeah, so in any event, the Amicus brief, what it would be for, where we're signing on, we would be non-participating, we don't have. The objections to the pipeline in general, like Shelby or Story County, they will be on their own Amicus, Amicus brief. And uh, they're trying to generate, we, we've got a very good chance of actually seeing this before the Supreme Court. Because of the split decisions at the districts and different levels of the court system, and uh. For us, this isn't about the pipeline at all, for us, this is about, in particular, home rule. And the, basically, them trying to eliminate what, what our, our codes are. Just on the state level or down here for ordinances, I mean, this would be basically the Supreme Court's chance to validate, verify. And validate our, our level of governance. And basically, that we can't be overridden all the time, I mean, that, yes, federal can have precedence on things. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't be able to improve things, because we know our people, and that's kinda what this is about. And so it really, at that point for us in particular, and for the state, and states still had some. On with, with the co- carbon pipeline too, I do know that there is a good chance there's some participation in having their own Amicus brief. At the state level as well, so, I mean, there's multiple in, uh, uh, I sounded like ISAC. Wanted to protect, participate on protecting the county's home rules and types, and that would be a separate brief on its own, and. The, the brief, the lawyer said would cost twenty five grand to put together, but we could have as many as, I don't know how many counties, ninety nine subtract two. But we could have ninety seven counties signing on to ours, so it'd make it a pretty cheap brief for us to do, we don't know how many numbers that's coming. Uh, Steve's supposed to keep me informed, he's, he's gonna work through his attorney to help.
Why is there a fee, a cost associated with it at all?
To create it, to create the brief, it's gotta be some lawyers sit down and make up the brief, lawyers, as you well know, don't work for free.
Have the county attorney just file that?
Probably about like our opioid lawsuit.
Kinda have to go together, I gotta make a.
Uh, cause I think there'll be some twenty eighty in this and everything. So I mean, would be the power of the numbers speaking, you know, so this would be Iowa's chance to protect home rule. And we, I've, since I've been on this board, been one of our chief, actually before, I remember listening to you guys talk about home rule and, and the. And how we get interrupted.
If you had ninety nine different attorneys to have in my rack, I'm more than what it would cost, you know, just with the time spent individually versus. Having one oversee it and.
They want like, the, 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 the DC attorney group wants to be able to put together six or. Probably, you know, if there's a few more, a few less, but I, six of ten, their finest six was their target number of separate briefs to present to the court. And then, that would give them the ability to. Show support for this issue to the Supreme Court, and then, I'd be, this, to me, when they started. Really explaining it, and it's really got down to more about what's about home rule, and our ability to not get stepped on by federal or state government. And the state government not to get stepped on by federal government, I mean, cause it come down, remember how FISA, they're the only ones allowed to do safety, but. They don't even, they admit it, that they don't have all the safety things ironed out, well, then we should be able to protect our people, that's our job is to protect and preserve. Those five people there, it's our job, and we're not allowed to? So anyway, this is why I thought this was a pretty good thing to, and that's why I'm bringing it to you, there'll be more to come. Just letting you know where we're at, I think it's something good to, to get on, we probably already had a code in place. You know, or an ordinance in place, if we'd known to do this, and we knew that we actually had the power, I mean, think about what our big argument was. What government's do to have an or- ordinance when nobody's gonna let you use the damn thing anyway, just get you in a lawsuit. Well, this is ironing that out for in the future, we'd have that, and so, any company wanting to come in here and do something, wouldn't know what they had to deal with. And that, and that was the challenge is, you know, if there's all these different rules out there, well, you know, if there is, there is, but. If you're not legally having them, if you're not legal to have them, so this would iron that all out, so I thought it was pretty important to get on, on board with this. Hopefully you guys will feel the same, and if at some point we have to have somebody come in and give you guys a quick brief to get the county's support, I mean, I. Only expect that, to be honest with you, um, so if you get more questions about it, please ask me, I'm trying to get done for the go, so we get to Texas. Okay, there's all this different things, there were some other questions I asked right now for the assessors, alright, so that's uh. Pretty much, well, last night we had a comfort or a EMA commission meeting, and just give me a little bit. There's different things wanting to work on, but Terry, they're wanting to redo some things down in the little. Meeting room down there in the law enforcement center, some updates on that thing to have a little more. Efficient and aesthetically proper conference, or, you know, meeting room slash. Information room, if you have to have a press thing, you know, we probably fit to use it a little more efficiently as a press meeting room. For the incident that happened at Washington Park and different things like that, so it'll be a thing where there's actually gonna be an EMA. Operations center upgrades, so just some things to clean it up down there and improve it, get rid of the. Things that may not look proper.
You know, it's all our building, but the ED is that part of their lease, that they're even about?
Is that part of their lease?
I think it is.
Okay, see, that's good to know, that's why I bring it up. That meeting room.
In the LHC. Where we voted at the last general election.
Is that the ones Zach's talking about?
Clarification on that, um.
I mean, cause it wouldn't, it wouldn't throw them out, but it would make it more of a county. Sheriff and EMA.
Cause if they can still use it, you know, but you might wanna get, I mean, if they have some needs as far as technology. Or they, it might be identical to what Zach's proposing, so.
So I'll have Zach get up with the ED, cause Pam was sitting there, and she, I mean, she probably didn't notice either, so.
Cause there's a LEC, who is that, Dwayne and Rod and the sheriff? And chief. Those people probably would be the ones that, of that LEC commission.
Alright, good, good to turn in that direction, I'll let him out, look at that, but anyway, we didn't know if that would be under capital improvements, since that's county property.
Depends, some of it might, but some of their specific equipment or whatever might need to be funded from them. I mean, we'll do the updates for the building, but.
Yeah, but, I mean, if there's computer issues or something, you gotta do that, and that's kinda how I ordered it, but I asked him to get up with you.
And it may, may not be able to happen this fiscal year, so.
And they do that, I mean, I, I always remind, ad nauseam about budgeting things, but I'm sure they were. Okay, that was, and so anyway, good. Okay, that was, and so anyway, good meeting last night, uh, different things that they're doing. Uh, obviously we get that budget amendment because we never spent that tower money that was in last year's budget that'll have to come to this year's budget. You remember there was supposed to be a ban, you know, but we didn't do it. So there'll be a budget and it'll probably be, it'll ever December timeframe, so we're talking, so. That's a couple other things that the commission voted on, I want to add if you want to, but that's all I got. Sorry about that, Ben.
I like listening, there are a lot of new stuff.
Yeah, we are bridge over there. Saturday day, we finally swinging some beams this morning, I think they had one or two set, so about half an hour ago, uh. Guys get the chance, uh, need to see, you know, I'm setting up big, large concrete beams over there, they're setting the, the north, the north approach that are north sections today. The, gonna break the beam this afternoon to see if they can set the, the, the rest of them. Uh, I think looking at doing ten more tomorrow, but uh, the beams got a break to, you know, to, to make sure they got the scrap they need from the concrete hearing, so, but uh, they're going to keep swinging beams until the beams are on, it's kind of like the drywall gets all their credit, you know? Yeah, see progress immediately when they do it that, so kind of neat to see, but that's where we're at on the bridge there, actually, uh, it's, it's going to look a lot different in the next couple of days. And then, uh, of course, once the beams are set, they'll start to get ready to get formal for the decade, so.
On target for the completion date.
I think they're kind of trying to remain with, stay within their, I don't know if they have a huge data, they got their working days, uh. I think they're trying to stay within their working days, but then they'll likely be over a few, uh, that if, if and even at that, they'll be in October, what's that, pretty soon.
Alrighty.
But uh, uh, but progress is being made, but uh. The our bridge, our great crew, they're, they're got about the week here down on, uh, two hundred and forty street and hopefully finally finishing that project up. And then, uh, I know we just mentioned last week, you know, kind of, you know, possibly uh, holding off on, uh, the tearing up prop, you know, at this time of year, we're going to make sure we give everybody the yeah, heads up, yeah, if they don't want us to get out in the fields and start tearing, tearing corn now, but no, we, we're not going to. I know. But no, at this time of year, we, we try not to tear out any crop, it, it, you know, if, uh, if they don't want to, it doesn't pay, that, that it's been growing all season, just let them get it, get it harvested, uh. Nothing, uh, too big of a hurry, right, we do have a, other project, we do want to get up there on I Avenue after we're done, and, and and there's a bit of a snow trap area, just an eight-hundred foot section of roadway there on I Avenue, two hundred street. So it'd be two hundred street north of I Avenue. Uh, yeah, and, uh, you know, going to work on that, that's a just two, three day thing there, uh, we can get that taken care of, and then if we're still trying to stay out of it.
Parts of the intersection.
Yeah, yeah. And if we're still looking at not wanting to, you know, knock down drop, we got a number of areas where we can go to, uh, you know, just stay within the right way, working on, uh, addressing some issues that we've identified, uh, you know, through inspections last year. Just some general reshaping. But anyway, this time of year, like I said, touchy, you don't want to knock down drop if you don't have to. Bridge crew, they are working on their, on bridge deck patching, uh, they're, yeah, about so, gonna do a couple bridges, one down by S Avenue, on S Avenue today, uh, one over on Kenwood.
Kurt's mom and dad's.
Right, uh, paradise, but about three or four bridges that we're doing, a, a pretty extensive bridge deck patching on it. So they'll be going on that here, oh, maybe this week, uh, probably finishing up next week and then that, probably get back on, uh, putting in some pipe that we have got in the yard for, uh, especially most down by curbs down there, I know they want to get those in for sure, so. And then, uh, looking sometime around the second week of September, possibly for the two inch pipe to come in for over on I Avenue where we had that multiquake failure. Still believe that I'll be on, on with them, making sure we're still on schedule to get them kind of in a timely manner, but uh, at last, last college, they were talking five weeks for fabrication, so that should put us right around there, get it right in and, uh, should be in hopefully for the bulk of, uh, bulk of harvest, so especially when corn harvest starts raining, so. Hopefully that all works out at some point, so. Uh, roadside, they're, they're mowing and seeding yet, uh, you know. Lot of roads to, to get over, uh, mowing and after, after they do get them mowing, we're, we're working on, uh, uh, cutting the edges off the edge of roads there, trying to, trying to get where we, you know, we've had water issues, you know, running down the edge of the road and, uh, they're getting kind of aggressive with, uh, getting it just kind of, that'll help once they have roads mowed, that way you're not dealing with all the grass and whatnot that gets in with blade, uh, and, and in the roadway, and, uh, that, it just helps tremendously with that. But, uh, but mowing and seeding, uh, they're going to keep on that and they'll just keep mowing until everything's, everything's done, so. And they'll keep up seeding after the great group, the ditchings. L fifty-one, uh, their discussion, uh, on the, the widening, uh, and the research saying, uh, we are uh, see, I have a typo there, check plans, we're going to be submitting our check plans for that, uh, project here this week, they're due by September second to stay on schedule for January, but, uh, I know there's discussion about the possibility of, of, or going through town, we kind of looked into that, uh, running into a lot of obstacles, but the you know, you know, the county trying to, to get involved in cities, but, uh, I do believe when we, uh, let this project, if it is something the, the city is interested, it is a good opportunity for them to, to, uh, to, to get in with our contractor that's going to be on site, get it, uh, and, uh, get a good price on up, you want to go through town, should they want to, uh.
Did you update the mayor on?
Show that, I just get that from the mayor. I did get that just, uh, just before it came up here, they, they weren't able to determine how much, uh, is, how many miles of, of what they do.
It's taking a lot of years to maintain that, that type of figure.
Yeah, yeah.
But you can pay still the bank once in a while.
It's a.
I've been wondering how much the revenue they generate off that whole stretch of.
Fifty-one hundred dollars a year.
Again, if it's up there, this did, does give them a good opportunity, uh. The obstacles that we were all coming was since how we had federal league money tied in with it, uh, it, it would, uh, but we would have to basically go through all the NIBA clearances again, which in a two week period just probably wasn't going to happen, uh, uh, possibly, but the biggest hangup was, uh, if we go through the city streets, uh, uh, if we add that to our plans, we would have to bring up the, uh, all the sidewalks, curves, uh, parking ramps, uh, the, up to ADA compliance and, uh, and, and that's a mix, gets to be pretty complicated and, and as it's put to be, uh, uh, might be counted out, what's appropriate for the county to get involved in, uh, that we don't receive funding for, so, uh, that's where, but I, I think, like I said, that's not to say that, uh, this is a good opportunity for, for the city if they so choose to, 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 to hang on to a contractor when they're when we're there, so. That's all related to it, though. The Dennis and Schleswig Yards, uh, do have a, a contractor, they must be doing some chip ceiling, uh, on, you know, for the DOT, uh. Let's see, that was, uh. Asphalt surfaces, uh. Right here, I apologize. Asphalt, asphalt surface tech, uh, corporation, they're, they're doing some chip ceiling around Schleswig and Dennis and areas there. They're looking at renting the Dennis and Dome Yard and, uh, the Schleswig Yard for, uh, well, three, four, five days, uh. Did the same thing last year, we, uh, we rented them, uh, you know, there, uh, just for, for that duration, now, uh, uh, over the door, green, that with, oh, actually, stop, looking at doing the same thing, they're looking at bringing, so, uh, God, but you're at the end of the week here to just utilize the arts for a little bit, uh. Nothing big, just setting up camp in the yards for the, so. Aside from that, uh, uh, update on highway thirty closure, I did speak with, uh, uh, the DOT. I did speak with the DOT a little bit on that this morning, uh, it sounds to me, the timeframe they're looking at, that's about two, three weeks for, for that closure uh, to be done with, uh, it's, it should be wrapping things up, I hate to give timeframes on that because I've been, I've been wrong before, but, uh, that's, uh, that's the latest word on, hopefully, uh, when that's complete, we can look at two hundred and ten street there, we're probably going to have a little bit of, uh, work to have to do to that road, uh, for the, the views it's seen over the last few months.
I'm going yesterday with my Prius, somebody had called about it and, uh, you know, one side said that's bad, but, you know, come back. Prius has really given you a good feel for what the road is.
It would. It's been, it's beat, been beat down pretty hard, it's getting squashed out, uh, it's, uh, we're going to have to do some work on that. As soon as, uh, as soon as this detour's over, we're.
Ninety-third, they were saying, we drove that one also, we had a lot of washboards.
That's just a bad hill in general for washboard, uh, but, uh, we'll address them.
Take a look at it.
Drop that skirt.
Will you submit the bill then, whatever you do on two ten, kind of state, try to get some reimbursement back on?
I'd have to visit with them, uh, we'll, we'll see if we can, uh, I'm not sure to what degree they can, uh, have conversations about it.
Is that bridge still on time? It, it just seems like it's.
I guess I'm not a hundred percent certain what their time was.
I guess I'm not either.
Due to the weather, I would guess. From their reasoning, I shouldn't say that.
According to what we're seeing with, that could be a small project compared to what I had on, put up with for two years around here.
When they're doing the.
Oh, yeah, roundabout.
That's just like, that should be a profanity. Rob, if you drive trucks, it's a profanity. It's like using the box.
Go down to some of your southern states and there are roundabouts everywhere.
Just drive through, just drive through, Devoin. Cut across, go over to anything, so that's, it's a thousand of them.
No, south bucket, the north bucket, two roundabouts, two new bridges, nineteen million dollar project.
I do the bridge replacement, I didn't, didn't know either about roundabouts. That'd be interesting.
Ben, I did get a couple calls, um, because south out of Manila, the highway there.
Yeah.
Some of the rain's washed the edging along the highway, like some spots that are pretty good drop offs.
We do have some of that, yeah, uh.
Plan to address some of those spots or.
We do, uh, we usually, in the fall, we're trying to get that a little more, I know they're, they're kind of really getting out, they're trying to get the well, the real bad washouts on the gravel road, yet, uh, they're getting headway on that and now they're, I, I see they're getting kind of aggressive with getting the edges, uh, you know, I said, work around the grass and whatnot, but, uh, get the edges, uh, cut down and, uh, out back, see, large window piles on the side road, that's kind of what they're after, they, they lay that edge and let it dry out on the side road there. And they'll slowly start working that back in, but they, so, rather, as opposed to just laying their gravel on the ditch, uh, try to get that shaved, but, uh, but they'll want to break that in, they have work across and. But, uh, so a lot of that's being seen, I know, I had some calls on that, you know, the, the large windows on the edge of the road, but, uh, it's, it's temporary, just trying to get roads and panics to, and, um, glad to see them getting aggressive with it actually, so we can get, get it to where the water gets off the river, so we don't have washouts.
Yeah, there's a lot of gravel loans out there, so, there's a lot of gravel loans out.
There are.
How many miles in Crawford County?
You have one.
Gravel, I think that's somewhere in the neighborhood, eight hundred and eighty?
It said twelve hundred and some, I had the total, wow, there.
From my EMA meeting.
So I was for twelve hundred and four miles of roads.
Yes, okay, so when I did, I, I think last time, it's about eight hundred and eighty.
That include level B?
No, no, that's just gravel. It's a lot, enough, that's a lot.
Thank you, Ben.
It's a lot.
Real quick, Ty did have one thing.
One other thing from the EMA meeting I would bring up, everyone take it on, uh, the towers are actually operational.
Seen a text from, I think, somebody, they're switching, they have to use some other channels.
They're still doing some fine tuning on the computer.
Which they.
What?
They are doing.
Break up.
Okay.
They're still doing some fine tuning, but, uh, they're, they're, they're operation. They did make others.
Twenty fifteen, ten years.
But they're working, so now we got good communication for our folks that are out doing their duties. So, good, I would like that, I would like, like, you, you knew where you had some ugly spots, it'd be fun to get one of the guys radioed to go around and see where they just around our area where that's helping in Charter Oak.
Yeah, it would be.
Yeah, you know, cause I remember you're recording your radio and I think that was in the community building or something.
Yeah, I've checked out very from day to day, I've been at my house.
So anyway, that's good news, I wanted to run that by.
Should be a hundred percent better, we should meet national standards, so.
And cut, uh, or last night, Tim brought, made the comment, we're up to ninety percent, so I'm done with that. You're at ninety-five, 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 so we're the, just some fine tuning had to be done yet, I guess. I don't know, that, that kind of takes. Okay, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Ty.
We should get a file of project cost on that to see how far we are off from the original, federal said reported.
Far, I remember a Turkerson was a real high number though.
See where we're at.
Hard to figure all that out, considering all the years it's been going on. We're not going to ask you. Please don't.
No, you've been making eye contact.
Can that just be a line item in every year's budget, is that any different?
No.
No. Okay, alright.
Let's move on.
Please God, don't let him ask me to look that.
I'm going to fake the funk on that one, I'm afraid. Resolution certifying taxes payable twenty-five, twenty-six. Yep, so you probably saw it in your packet, we do it every year, the, um, it shows consolidated tax rate for our city districts and our rural districts, it also includes all of the taxing authorities to include township, cities, schools, which are like the school districts, area schools, which are community colleges. Um, it includes the county city portion, the county rural portion, yeah, the extension hospital. Um, there's a couple cemeteries that are levied outside, they're levied with the township, but they're, they have their own levee.
Surprising how different some of the levees are.
Super different, yeah.
Township and depending on what school district you're in.
Yes, very different.
Like, wow, you can live in Crawford County and pay a lot different.
Yeah.
Next thing, your neighbor down the road.
Yeah, even city to city, that's very different, yeah, yeah, exactly. Any question on those or?
Want a motion to approve as presented or?
Questions, I would have one of those, so, I'll save it for.
Approved.
Making a motion.
Yeah.
Motion by Craig.
Second.
Second by Ty, any further discussion? Is resolution, so call, Kyle, Carl, Craig.
Hi. Hi.
Ty.
Hi.
Chairman, sorry. Rachel, we are up to you.
I would like a copy of that. Email it out?
I can email it. That'd be fabulous. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Rachel. It's a beautiful day.
Yeah. You're outside. The Iowa Donor Network reached out to me and offered me free attendance at their one day conference that's held in September in Ankeny. Our regional rep is Madeline Clark and she said, when she was told that she could offer a free sponsorship spot, I was the first person who came to her mind. That is due to my work as medical examiner investigator and then I've been serving on a state committee with Iowa Donor Network that's trying to improve the number of cases that are reported. Because not all counties are reporting all out of hospital deaths to the donor network and that's a goal they have to continue their important work. So I thought I would ask the board if the county is willing to pay my expenses. The registration's already covered. But I'd like to go out the night before since it's midweek, do a one night hotel stay and mileage and food if you're so inclined.
I think it's great that you've been offered.
Standing out in our.
Those are handbook state about. Have something there.
But if it's, she would be staying overnight, so it's. Different, it's.
Yeah, I just look at here. Just want to make sure we're consistent.
I think that what, what we tried to accomplish with that is, you know, if it's a conference that starts at 10 o'clock in the morning.
I remember discussing this at this table, so I just want to make sure we're.
Right, I got you.
Somebody's like, we just threw that for me or whatever.
If you have a, if you have a one day meeting in Ida Grove, we don't.
We have a state of whole steam anyway, so.
This is not a new earth.
What we're trying to avoid is somebody having to get up at four o'clock in the morning to get to a meeting.
Which I'm capable of, but I think we're trying to get around that. I don't know anybody who learns best or networks only after driving.
Right, that's what we're doing.
Especially if it starts before nine o'clock in the morning.
That was covered by.
Right.
It was like eight thirty or nine and started at nine.
We do not expect our employees to get up at four o'clock in the morning.
Eight o'clock in the morning.
Absolutely, so.
Yep.
Mileage will be minimal.
Yeah.
No, this is all, this is why I should get an updated.
You should.
And I didn't remember if I even have like a contract. Like with Ida County, I have a contract, but I don't, I thought, oh, I should see if training is in the contract. Then I thought, I don't think, I don't think I have one.
I don't think so here.
So.
A memorandum of understanding or something.
Something.
New word we got.
Well, it starts at eight o'clock. It's in any.
I got no problem.
I got no problem.
I think that stays consistently in our handbook.
He made a motion, I will second.
Any further discussion? All favor sat? Chair, don't tie.
Get back your information that you learned that you think we can.
Yep, it's a hard area to get continuing in, so it's nice when there's an opportunity.
We appreciate it.
Thank you for being engaged in.
It's interesting. Any questions? We got your number.
Can we hear about it when you get that?
Sure. Yeah, I love talking.
Well, you're always welcome.
Why is it a change or same to the donor network? Worth it, but I was opportunity to make those connections if possible.
I know, I remember getting a letter. Showed all, it didn't tell people, but it told you the number of people and all the stuff that like with my mom, she was a donor. You got a list of all the things that actually.
It's amazing.
They do things that I never thought about. So I mean, yeah, they like.
Not didn't have much left.
Okay, next is our letter reclamation for region 12. That was in our packet.
Yeah. Did you read your details? Yeah, literally $10,000 grant. It's just your 10 homeowners for the region. Just need the intergovernmental counsel or, you know, letter of support or, yeah.
With 110,000. My motion to approve that letter of recommendation, second.
I wish I could further discussion. Hearing none, all favor sat. Chair, both time.
So it's an egg shop?
Was that in my packet? I don't see it.
No, Gracie will bring it up.
Bring it up. Or start up.
Or whoever.
What's up? You be sure can.
I think with the discussion we had earlier, I think it just proved to, to remove, right, remove some from there and leave the rest alone. So I make a motion to remove Madison, Jacobson and the front work because they're donating with a trailer.
Any further discussion?
Effective.
Completely today.
Good point, Ken.
Yeah, I mean, he's gonna ask the question.
Any further discussion?
I, you know, I think it just we'll see what, you know, higher. Just a little lag of time will be viable. Without having another administrator for a short period of time.
I think you're close to a higher.
Yeah, we have our conference part meeting at that.
Yep.
If you're not the office, it's, it's a standard reason.
Sound further discussion, all favor sat.
Aye.
Aye.
Chair, both time.
I wonder if that's been working since we sat down, man. I wonder if, because I had a text said it wasn't.
Could be internet over there.
I think we got it from this one person, so yeah, it could be.
We do a lot of fiber stuff over there. Chatter Oak area.
Yeah, they're solid town.
Yeah.
It'll be on our YouTube.
Kind of what I. I mean, it's, there's really a lot of people.
I haven't crossed on O Avenue all the way to Madison, I think, so.
Well, while I was on 193rd Street, I did drive out to Adams place. See what he's doing out there.
Pretty dollar for dollar, I can't imagine. They're making a bunch of revenue in Chatter Oak area in Ford Frontier.
Does pretty good. We're off of some new line that comes right out of my Carlos. So the office does pretty good. Not perfect, but pretty good. But the house, sometimes my picture blurry and on the TV. Cause I use internet up there at the house. I don't see, a lot of guts, a couple of apps that I watch. Or TV. Google has all the news and sports that I need, so. More than there.
They say it's darling, it's pretty darn good, reviable, but what is darling?
Darling?
Funny, a hundred and thirty dollars a month. Still got the old Dish Network. Not wrong with that.
I haven't had like that many years, but I don't really watch TV.
Yeah, I got Google, which has all the major networks. Some of the local stuff. All the sports stuff.
No. It's all streaming, right?
Yes, true. Then, then I got, we got Disney, it's the kids come all there. Paramount and HBO Max.
All the local channels.
So do you want to look at those such as time? Cause that's something within. I didn't know that was.
It's good. Busy. It's a lot. It's lots.
Hard people, really. We've been well educated recently.
Yeah.
Last couple, three years. Seems like we've been right by.
So right now I'm just working on. Cause you know, they're kind of playing catch up too a little bit. So I'm just entering the rebel notes. In the. And then after that, we can roll over. Have to guess. The dates long. Yeah. I just.
It's just the learning and, and this is when you think you know. That way anymore.
That's what I've.
All right, our leader is back. We can continue.
Terry.
Somebody.
Just for reference, you know, we talked about bringing it up like first year to update that. Thousand dollars is with a two point six inflationary rate since then, that's about equal to 140. So that's how much I know.
Great start. Thanks for coming up. They have another tax debate?
Yeah, yeah. So, um, this, I don't know. Just passing around. So he didn't give me specifics, but I have the personal number, number on there and the legal description. And he hasn't started it yet. He wanted me to call him after this got approved and signed and stuff. So I'm gonna call him and then. But he did estimate the cost at around 200,000 dollars, so. Yeah.
We have a random one based on the estimated cost and then it actually comes back after it's built less than 100,000. Does that ever happen? Yeah, I guess I never, we never had those conversations if they paid back and they didn't end up meeting their criteria. When we approve them with, and then after, now all this goes out and does their final assessment, but it's less than that. I don't, I guess I don't, I've never heard.
But based on building costs these days.
Right, I would agree.
Do you have a split footage and you know how much the concrete, the electrical?
Always ask the question.
No, I was just.
There was a couple of them that back when he went away and he said, I don't know if they're gonna meet this, just the size of what they're. So I never heard, we never heard back if they actually met or.
And I don't know that he knows for sure, like, cause he didn't have like the exact dimension. So I think he's just, but he estimated the cost of that.
So I guess it's safe to say major construction.
And I think that that, he had some land with his brother. I think that was just a recent.
Yep.
Split, I, yeah. I don't do those splits.
I'd make a motion that we approve of his abatement based on the fact that it's, we just discussed at a garage for the cost of 100,000. But I don't know if we have anything in place if a property doesn't come to the 1,000.
Here a motion by Jane.
Second.
Second by Craig. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all favor sat.
Aye.
Chair, both time.
Thanks for coming up. Could probably approve it without seeing the paper.
Yeah.
We like you guys coming up.
Yeah. And he isn't, he didn't want to do anything until it was approved.
Right, I understand.
I don't know if that's always the process, like.
Not any major construction.
No major construction that we started, but I think.
I think it's bad. Or if you have the concrete board and it doesn't get. Doesn't hurt.
Puddings, you know, is usually.
That's a video.
You can. You're supposed to buy prior to construction. Estates that are.
Thanks, Darrell.
We did it citizen.
We are up to citizen, but we have nobody in the room. Everybody on Zoom?
Yeah, I do just a couple of little things. I'll get this on next week's agenda. So Ryan's office IT. There was a mini split put in there. Mitsubishi P Series cool only because the servers were going to be stored in that room. In the transition between IT directors, the servers were moved to the basement location to the storage that happens. It's cool, the whole business. Ryan now needs heat. So, and that unit does not provide heat. So I talked with Justin Gatto and they are willing to. They've made a proposal to replace the self-contained mini split in Ryan's new office. They're proposing installation of a Dakin mini split heat pump. The installation will include removal of, of the cool only unit. It will include replacing the Dakin mini split to the air heat pump. With installations, we will cap off the existing air duct to the space. And we'll have full control of heat and control in the new, with the new mini split. With the change of utilization of the space and it is no longer being a server room, the installed unit is not the proper unit for that area. The quote includes a complete cost for installing the mini split in Ryan's office, including the removal of the old unit, installation of the new unit. With no charge for the equipment or, and only charging the labor and materials for like installation. So they're basically doing an exchange of units. 1,930 dollars. So I will put that on next week's agenda. You guys can decide if that's something you want to do or not.
Gotta have, we got some heat.
Yeah, well, I think there's existing ducting. I'm not sure how. I kind of asked the question and did not get an answer. So if y'all want to ask the question. Yes, so I don't know. I don't know that, I don't know. But now we have hole in our masonry wall to the outside of the building. So there's that. I don't, I don't know what that means. Anyway, it's still 1,900 dollars, but it's only 1,900 dollars.
Cost to fix the hole in the wall.
I know, exactly. Maybe 1,900 dollars, exactly. Exactly. I'm also gonna put this other issue, well, it's not an issue. It's the IMWCA's official ballot for the Board of Trustees. There are three names on it, three write-ins. So that this board can decide how they want to vote if they want. The three names on here are existing members and were willing to serve again. I also am on that board.
Oh, well, let's write you in.
Anyway, I am already on that board, so you don't have to write. Yeah, all of them are very good. There's a mayor of Williamsburg, that's Adam Greer, Katie Flint, she's the Franklin County Auditor. We spoke of Katie a little bit ago. John Conier, the Director of Risk Management and Support Services at Urbendale. So there's, there's a lot of good people on that board.
And we're voting for one, two, or three?
Three, voting for three.
They can all three get back.
So you can vote for up to three, we don't have to vote for all three.
See.
And there's three write-in lines too, so if you.
I thought it was voting for, make them like the chairman.
Oh, no, I'm just to remain on the board. We go through the cycle every, either two or three people.
Speaking of boards, Dave was having enough props earlier. I'd like everybody to know that Jean actually got put on the education.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah.
Thanks, Ty.
On the what, education board you said?
Education Committee for the supervisor, helps fix out our speakers and, and what we're working on.
Things will be.
Come up with things like the certified supervisor deal.
Awesome.
She said that she'd had interest, and I think she gets along. I've actually seen her.
What?
So.
What? How long is your day? I mean, most of us just have twenty-four hours.
She doesn't sleep, you know, that's what.
It gets pretty long.
You say Adam has like three-fourths of it, the way it sounds.
It's not every day, but when it, when I, when I am doing that job, it takes sometimes, so.
Women and victims feel that, but great.
Wasn't that beautiful in there, in all of those, uh, centerpieces where some of them came, some of those flowers came out in just. Pam's backyard, uh, people's backyards.
Pam really has time she put in.
Pam put in a lot of time. Pam, uh, yeah, she, she rocks, but Pam likes to.
Those are the best.
Her thing.
Oh, those were all, uh, those came from Andrew of, um, Nami's, uh, garden over by, uh, Arcadia's.
Bacon.
And the tom, the tomatoes were all, yeah, all, we put extra bacon grease in, we saved the bacon grease, we put that all over it, simbried all day.
Pork tail, green beans laced with bacon.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, yeah, that's my wife's southern, southern secret is how she cooks green beans. With a little bit of bacon, or a lot of bacon grease, and some other additives.
You know, I did, I know yesterday, did have some chest pains. It worked. But it's our good things.
Could have had been two desserts, because the sugar in that, that rhubarb was, that rhubarb was pretty, uh, so we had to keep adding sugar. Lots of sugar, and then brown sugar on top of that.
I mean, if you had, get Jean happy, said, what are you doing spoiling Kyle? I thought I was the only one he spoiled. I was the only one that.
I, I was pretty, I, when I saw.
I couldn't, I called her. I was, I left Omaha five o'clock, I didn't, couldn't make it.
When I saw your name come up, I'm like, I get into that one, and so I.
For the fundraiser?
Yes, it was a.
For the women in business, so we can still donate to you.
You absolutely still can, because we, that money goes a long way for our Santa Claus house, um, uh, doing the parks and, uh, beautification and places.
Ladies do a lot.
We do. We do. We always say that the guys get together and have coffee and got something, we get together and do something. That used to be the joke. I don't know.
Right.
You're proud of it.
Well, the guys also play card.
Yeah, they. We just get stuff done. That's our main mission, and this year we took over the hot summer nights, which took a lot of volunteering, and, uh, you just don't realize how much that all takes, but we enjoy it, and, uh, as long as we're still getting, and we have lots of members, um, uh, as Kent Lansing calls it, we have some blisters, they show up after the work is done. He's kind of funny. We enjoyed, and his, uh, facility was perfect. He was so welcoming. He's in there, clean and hot, you know, the roasters out and just, uh, keeping it all. Yeah, was very, we thanked him very much, she said, 'cause last year we almost died, 'cause we had to carry the food from, have you ever been down in the basement at, uh, the lottery theater, and it goes down, and then, we carried all that stuff up from, from that, um, and then we plated it in the, uh, cafe, and then we went across the street to the state people, and we didn't really have any rhyme or reason to who got what, so we're yelling it out, and it was like a hundred and two degrees, 'cause we're in the sun, so.
Maybe, maybe we'll have big shot done by next year.
That's perfect, 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 and Lauren's a big part of it. She is a worker, um, she's been a good, uh, Taylor made the most amazing charcuterie table, was aborted with the entire table, um, but just, it was the latest, um, made dips and, uh, uh, red lantern, uh, cheese dip, and, yeah.
I'm a re-ger.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
It's okay, absolutely.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye. Kyle, can you get on the road to Texas?
Yeah, we got.
Big troubles.